We will call this February eighteen, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Hoover Town Council to order at seven, what is fourteen. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance if you can, remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justin Albright. Mike Wallace. Sandra Reese. Tammy Gerdinich. Frank Spinks here, Brett Galvin, Randy Diner, present, with the President. Brad Ladwick, not here, Josh Chouella. Jamie Usland. The first thing we have before us is a public hearing. Again, we will ask everyone in the room, if you haven't done so already, go to the the buffet table there and sign the public hearing form. We need to make sure that that's that was not. The skinny table, the skinny table, please. So we will officially open the public hearing at uh seven sixteen. The town here in front of us is what will be Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two dash eighteen when considered in the regular meeting. Uh this public hearing is to talk about uh the uh the human capital development fund, is that right? CCD uh in accordance with the law, we are going to be increasing that from what to what?
Point oh four cents to point oh five.
Per one. So let it so let it be resolved at the Hoover Town Council, Porter County, Indiana, that uh that a need now exists for the establishment of a human capital development fund for following purpose. For all uses set out in Indiana thirty six dash nine dash one five point five. Be it further resolved, the council uh will adhere to the provisions of Indiana Code thirty six dash nine dash one five point one five. Uh the proposed funds will not exceed point zero five cent on each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Said tax rate will be levy beginning with taxes for twenty twenty five payable in twenty twenty six. Uh be it further resolved at the proof of publication of the public hearing held on the eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five, a certified copy of this resolution shall be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance. State of Indiana is provided by law. It's cumulative fund is subject to the approval of the Department of Local Government Finance. Jamie, anything to add to this? Brett, anything to add to this?
Nothing.
Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Let it be said that there were public comments were asked for three times. Counsel, any comments? You only get a what, counsel? No. And Jamie, this this money can be used for whatever.
This is the money that we purchased in this person.
All right, we opened this public meeting of this public hearing. We even asked for, we read, we had public comment, we had a council comment. Is there anything else that needs to be done? I don't think so. So with that, we will close this public hearing at seven eighty. And then we will move back into our regularly scheduled town council meeting. Um as you, it'll be a public hearing now with the public comment, town council would like let everyone know that the agenda for our meeting is available online on the town website. Friday before we meet to allow citizens to allow citizens to come and speak on topics before decision is made. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on our website for our next meeting. In order to give everyone an opportunity to speak and get through today's business, please state your name and address. We're limiting your comments to three minutes. Comments will only be allowed during the public comment section of the meeting directly after this statement is read. Uh being that this has been posted, is there anybody from the public that has any comments that we should consider before moving? Anyone from the public, a comment? Anyone from the public with a comment? But the records show that we had asked for public comment three times and there were none. The first thing we have is the approval of the town council minutes. We have December workshop minutes, January workshop minutes, January counseling minutes. If you want to, you can add the dates to each other. Twenty twenty four. January fourteenth. Twenty twenty five. And January twenty four, twenty five. Is there a motion on these minutes? Do something, folks. I made motion, we approved minutes. Justin. There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second Tammy.
There is a motion by Justin, a second by Tammy, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, but. So you didn't bring new coverage here, that is accurate, Brett, yes, sir, Mr. President? First, we're going with the CCMD. Capital fund. We have a new coverage here, counsel stating that the uh uh this resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two dash eighteen, this is the CCD rate. And we just had a public hearing for, uh that's here. We have resolution for Park Ridge, which we'll talk about in the organs uh for cul-de-sacs. But the first thing we need to consider is the ordinance of the resolution unanimous consent vote. This allows us to to hear it, to hear it the first time. There's all of us that are here, we can back on this, both are waiting for them. So is there a motion to take these under unanimous consent?
I made a motion to accept these under unanimous consent.
There is any motions, there are second. Okay, there's a motion by Mike, seconded by Sandra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, Brett?
We're not acting, are we acting on the resolution for?
We're not acting on any resolutions first. I just wanted to make sure that we had the right bid one. All right, so again, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, five. Awesome. So now we have Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two dash one eight. Uh one eight, yeah, CCD rate, we have this in front of us. Uh this is the increase uh from the four cents on the hundred dollars of assessed values and five, which is kind of public hearing for. And uh we can go through all of it. Looks like uh the attorney and Brett looked at it and also. So be resolved by the town council here in Porter County, Indiana, that indeed now exists for the establishment of a cumulative capital development fund for the following purposes. For all uses set out in Indiana thirty six dash nine dash one five point five. Be it further resolved that the council will adhere to the provisions of Indiana Code thirty six dash nine dash one five point five. The uh the proposed uh fund will not exceed five cents on each hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Uh said tax rate will be levy beginning with taxes for twenty twenty five available in twenty twenty six. Be it further resolved that the proof of publication of the public hearing held on the eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five. And certified copy of this resolution shall be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance of the state of Indiana is provided by law. It's cumulative fund is subject to the approval of the Department of Local Government Finance. Is there a motion on this resolution?
I made a motion to accept the resolution twenty twenty five dash two dash eighteen.
Mike has made a motion, is there a second? I'll second it, Justin. Yes, there's been a motion by Mike, a second by Justin, is there any further discussion? Anything to add? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, five.
I just asked that when you sign this uh resolution, there's a y side and an a side. Just make sure you sign on the y.
Okay. Would you please help us remember that, that we had as well, please? I'd hate to speed through all the documents we signed when uh accidentally.
Is this the only one we're doing it like?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to be done like that.
The next thing we have is Resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two dash one eight dash one, this is Park Ridge. Um I think we can come up with a sequence on this. What is going on, counsel and to the public is is that the uh developers and the builders, the builder of Park Ridge has gone to the developer of Park Ridge and said that there is a need for a sort of product to be added. Some pair of homes in the back, I believe there were twenty six pair of homes is being considered currently by the uh HRC who is in charge of the development agreement. If they are currently working through that process and they will consider it at their March meeting. If they were to approve it, they will pass it out to the planning commission to be considered there for recommendation to the council at our next meeting. So for us to approve this, this time, I think is premature and and jumps a couple of different steps. Because not only does our HRC have to approve the changes, but a developer has to approve those as well. We haven't received that paperwork. So my recommendations to this consulate is to table this.
Brett, do you have any uh insight on this as well? I agree with John. I mean, I was there at the HRC meeting, listening to Matt. The rest of the team, go ahead, they got some work to do. Okay.
Then uh my motion is that we go ahead and table Resolution twenty twenty five dash, there are few, that's one, that's one. Justin.
The motions are second.
I'll second Tammy.
There being a motion by Justin and seconded by Tammy, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is tabled. Passes by. All right, the next thing we have in front of us is ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two one eight. This is the cul-de-sac. Can you go through this a little bit?
Sure, sure. Um so our original ordinance ran five hundred feet and it was um not working out for our developer that had a cul-de-sac that was going to be longer. Um the planning commission researched and found there's no reason why five hundred feet was the nominal number that was in our ordinance, so we extended it to six hundred feet to compensate the uh builder and what he needed for his cul-de-sac. Uh I think anything after six hundred feet would probably need to have some type of verbiage added to the ordinance saying that you need to have a sign there as a courtesy so people don't turn down a one-way street, get down there and see if that end. But at six hundred feet, we're comfortable with leaving it, no signage, just the ordinance moved from five hundred to six hundred.
And the six hundred feet will allow the developer who came in to talk to us that long enough for what they need.
Uh I believe it was six hundred feet, if you remember this one.
It was eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred. And would it be beneficial before we actually pass this to just uh just to chat with extra verbiage in it for signage? If it's going to be over six hundred feet?
We could do that, that would be enough to do, but I I think moreover, we need to check to make sure it wasn't eleven hundred. I I don't see how eleven hundred would work because their entrance rode into the development is halfway each direction. I don't see the whole project being twelve hundred feet or twenty two hundred feet long.
Appeared in in the drawing as a short entrance way. You turned right and the cul-de-sac was way down at the other end.
Okay, uh it could be um. Okay, I would say, okay, until we get confirmation, I guess the planning commission can um research that the total of what it's needed, I, then maybe we just eliminate the number of feet entirely and just say anything over six hundred feet needs a sign.
That's, that's.
Anything over five hundred feet needs a sign. Makes it simpler for the future. It would make it simpler for future development.
So then I think we need a motion to send this back to the planning commission.
With those, with those recommendations.
With those recommendations.
Yeah, so I'll I'll make that motion that we send it back to the planning commission uh to amend the maximum length of the cul-de-sac to six hundred feet. Actually, it would should say maximum length of the cul-de-sac should be six hundred feet and then anything past that would require signage and there would be no actual verbiage at that point.
So the max, as I read this, though, it sets the maximum at six hundred feet, correct? So we want to eliminate that and put it on the line, that's not what I heard, I'm sorry. Uh so we don't want any, if I'm if I'm understanding right, we don't want any requirement for the length of what the cul-de-sac, the entrance to the cul-de-sac would be, right?
Yes.
But if it's more than six hundred feet, it needs a sign stating that so.
That's very much what I would say, yes, maximum length of six hundred feet uh without a sign. After six hundred feet, you would need a sign, but there's no maximum length for the entrance into.
Okay.
Is that?
Yes, sir, now I understand, though.
You can legally describe that. You can legally describe that like that.
I want to take a look at the paperwork, the drawing, okay.
Does this make sense, Randy?
Not really. I I understand what Justin's saying, that doesn't make sense, but I'm going to try to fill it out because there's obviously code for that, I mean.
I think we talked attack that we were going to eliminate the the length uh because there didn't seem to be a reason as to why we were going to, that that was the number that was there.
I agree with that, but I I didn't think it's that long, I didn't think it was about a hundred, but again, I that seems very long, but again, I think we just go back one of those real quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you, I I think we understand what what it is we want now.
Okay.
Okay. We'll send back to that rec recommendation and in that timeframe, if you guys find anything else out on it, we can head on to it.
Because I know there's a specific. Yes, please do, no, please do.
Okay.
Have us look at it again, because I know there's a specific sign that's required for cul-de-sacs. And I can't remember if it's the no outlet or if it, I don't want to. One or the other, so I, we need to look at.
So then our motion needs to be to send this back to traffic first and then back to planning. What we need to do, right?
That should sound like we need, yeah. Maybe we should just, I think we did talk, and I can't remember, but I think we did talk to the very person about this, asking that if there was any reason why they would need to be shortened than five hundred feet. Um there's still hydrants a certain number of feet.
Yeah, they they got the, they got the term for them.
Okay.
We had, we had part of our most talking was was asked about this.
Yeah, they were just concerned with the radius, the turn radius in the end.
Yeah, we weren't, I think this doesn't change anything.
No, that doesn't change that at all, so.
And there, the fire department's part of it. Yes.
Okay, so is there a motion to do that?
So that's my uh send it back to traffic uh with those recommendations and let them take a uh take a look at it and amend as needed. I know it's a lot, but hopefully it's clear.
I think so. There are justice made motions, there are second.
I'll second that.
So do we call it table?
Uh I think we're just, we're referring into those two committees, so.
We will take a lack for one.
Okay, the act, well, the action we're taking is to send it back to. Okay, so there was a motion by Justin, seconded by Sandra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe that's everything, all the resolutions and ordinances, there's nothing here under uh old business. We have new business. Well, I I don't see anything here from Nico. Jamie.
I don't have anything that's.
Just the email, there are requests in uh June, well, that close the road, they do every year, the request for appreciation, they're going to be due in emails, you asked me.
Okay. Uh and the fire department has been notified?
Yes.
Chief, you don't have any concerns about? Let me not raise it though, do you have any concerns?
I do not.
Okay.
You're free, I don't know.
I'm here, thanks for.
You should cook eggs, please.
Cheers.
All right, is there a motion to approve this road closure?
Uh I'll make my own approval.
Is there a second?
Sounds like a funny question.
There being a motion by Justin, seconded by Tammy, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, five. All right, you've got CCMG, Jamie, you threw this to us separately, does everybody have it? Ready? Yes, what do we got?
So we got our bids, everybody, three bids, we had Reeve Riley, Grimmer, and Gavin. Um Reeve Riley, Willis, the lowly fed at uh one point three, seven, six, two, seven, one point one. Um so they come in well under budget. Um so we are recommending and Evan Marsh has recommended that we have a notice proceed. Uh we have a very small window to get this paperwork done. I think it's going to be done by March
Six.
Six, so it's coming up.
Is this like the last part of it or do we need to like especially?
Yeah, this is the part we gotta do, and once once John signs this, this will go to Reeve Riley, we gotta have their contract and then everything, so so.
Okay, briefly tell us what this is going to be.
Uh so the segror curb three change, we've been working on for years. Um this will connect the project that we just did on Norway to Chicago. So Chicago will have all new drainage and Roseburg will be in the space.
So will this, this is going to take care of that alleyway behind Goodby's and all of that and stuff? All of that should no longer flood up to the best possible.
Yes, especially if it doesn't rain, yes.
And and you said this came in under?
Yes.
So does that mean there's actually?
No, no, what CCMG is what do, is what it is, but it's more happened through last time we come in the way over.
Okay, and if they came over, that would be us being responsible for the extra?
Yeah, and and so what this does is we have a set amount aside for this, uh this will allow us to take that money that's flooded over now and apply it in the second phase, which we just applied for at the end of January. There's a slim chance if things go right, that we can do phase two, still got this year.
Oh, nice.
And I think it goes without saying, the way that you manage this is really quick, you're in a great, a great spot. Uh we had, we had tried it one way and it became overly complicated and way over budget. Uh but you you reacted quickly, uh you worked with the engineers, they came up with a with a new plan with Mike and uh they put this together in a way that we were able to get something done that is really if anybody has made it over there to Goodby's and their rains and all of that area, it's a, it really is a disaster, so.
Right.
Um I very much appreciate the the work and the management that you put into this, uh so that we can get answers, thank you. Mike, is this your?
Is my motion to accept like Patrick with re-pray?
And I will second that, Justin.
Well, there is a motion by Mike and a second by Justin to accept the award to CCMG bid to Reeve Riley. Is there any further discussion? When does it start? When it's starting?
We don't know the answer, I got, uh till we get their contract, uh you're going to remember the snakebite support and wave water lines at first, so they're going to be delayed a little bit. Reeve Riley could come in here and do the segror um curb street in two weeks, we don't know. I would have stood, there's a number wise there one time to do them both, so it could be midsummer.
Okay. By fall of next year, this is the by fall of this year.
By fall of this year, yes, yeah. I'd say that every year they're more paid on the first week of November, but yes.
Okay. Awesome. All right, so there was a motion and a second, um I had the only other further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, five, stall.
This is very good, I think this is really.
So really that water problem all the way around, all the way down, worked this out in the whole part of town, built you know, retail section, now a space, right?
But we'll leave, that's the plan, and it sets us up to go to Elliott Park and after Jeffers Street, that will be the next phases, you know, when we phase this in. Um but uh so this is, yeah, the additional onslaught of water could be resolved with this.
So that catch basin is right there in the alleyway right there, and then that will probably be part of.
Replaced, yes.
All replaced, so they'll be have to be extreme.
And we find out putting tie-ins for all these businesses, so everybody with sub hopes, they'll be below service.
Fantastic.
Then we can force them to connect right now, we can force them to connect.
Okay.
I think it'll go out of its pack.
I think so. All right, anything else that's new that needed to be added up? Okay, then we'll go to the reports officers, ready, you're up.
Uh the only thing I got is the water project, so it's a curve next week, I think in light of the weather. Um they're going to push back, we do have tremendous frost on the ground. Um their plan right now is to start at Walgreens and rally and get the connections done. Um and then they'll attack it after that. Uh he's sticking by it, it's four months from start to finish, which would be great for the CCMG. Uh but again, I've noticed enough for what their dictates, and then if they start at any time soon, yeah, there's a lot of fraud.
Randy, with Park Ridge, I know we had some discussions about getting together with Jason Spain and with.
This Friday.
This Friday?
I think it's at ten or ten thirty, this Friday, we will be there.
Okay. Uh for the councils, rather than here hoping that at our next meeting, we will be able to accept the uh the roads. Uh once it's determined which roads are done, uh we'll have a list of what those are from our engineer for review, we should have our maintenance file. You think we're going to be okay or no?
Yeah, I, me, yeah, yeah, there's some, the singles make me nervous, apparently they got a plan. Uh some of the cosmic things again, you know, uh I want Jason's opinion on it, but some things I'm going to stick with, I mean, there's some that side bottles brushed, so they gotta have a plan with that, maybe.
Okay, and part of this is going to include like a construction route for the roads, like where?
Well, we've had that conversation, so I will have that with Jason, I know it's the board's wishes, and it's not my wish too. Uh and I know Steve Hill wasn't in favor of it, but I will bring it up to Jason and we will talk about that as well.
Right.
It doesn't take, I'm out there every day, and it doesn't take very long to watch these construction crews uh drive over these uh, you know, the gutters and things and the and the curves without having anything on there that supports them. uh, drive over these uh, you know, the gutters and things and the and the curves without having anything on there that supports them, for us not to set up and establish, have to establish route and procedure. Uh, but the bond that Steve Kill is supposed to bring in for us, is supposed to have, also have, it's supposed to be three years in the time he gives it to us. So typically, I don't know if that, if the bond stays, I would assume that the bond would state the the dates in which it was good. And if not, there'd be a letter coming, so we want everybody in the room to make sure that when we get this, and we review it, that the three years is stated on this material, please.
On the day we accept the roads, right?
On the day we accept the roads, to be, if all things were unclear, that would be at our next meeting. Alright. They're really ready, then if it's at that particular time, then we can, we can accept other things that they've requested, right?
Yeah, it's a request, of course, to take the lift station electric, uh, get it in the town, same for the lift station.
Cool. Anything else?
Nope.
Police Department.
Uh, I just have my normal report to go through. In the month of January, the police department connected one hundred and fifty nine traffic staff, we answered one hundred and eleven calls of service. Out of that twenty seven citations were issued, nine missing in arrest and one felony level arrest. The board had a breakdown of the calls of service. Uh, nothing on order in the vehicle report, and you have a latest content report.
Any updates on the generate?
Uh, the parts are ordered, the first payment to uh, secure those long parts were, was um, made to them, so now we're just in waiting game.
Okay, again, if we didn't say that a little bit last time, we did a lot of work dealing with this, you and Mary Jane, you were the very, it was a big help, you were the person stepped up to turn this building into a more than cool and sheltering. You and Justin, I appreciate you guys looking at it, because that will come in handy for the police department as well, and as for the bulk, so. I appreciate the work that you put in, naturally, all of it. Uh, the parts department, what's that?
Um, park board is uh, applying for a grant with Porter County Community Foundation. Um, helps with the expense of putting up the mural. We should find out if we got any kind of award sometime in mid-May. Um, we are now working on applying for a grant from the Indiana Arts Commission. We're the same thing. Uh, Easter recon is gonna be April nineteenth this year. It's the day before Easter. Then corn.
Who, the day is that again, I'm sorry?
No, it's the day of April nineteenth.
Awesome.
Um, yeah. Last thing on my list is, we'd like to thank our new councilperson, Sandra, for her donation to the prizes for Easter recon. Um, we give out approximately thirty five prizes to each group, and that's quite an expense, and your donation will help a lot, thank you. And that's it.
Oh, the the mural, I thought, oh, very genuinely working on a uh, grant for that. Did that not, did that not happen? Is that the border coming?
Yeah, that was the, the one we just applied for on Saturday, is the one she's been working on.
Oh.
Uh, we, we did receive five thousand from the Indiana Dunes. She worked on that one too. Um, now we're working on asking for applying for one from Indiana Arts Commission.
Okay.
As sort of a backup.
Good, and I'd really like to see that that happen, that mural.
We would very much like to see it happen.
I do.
And that money coming to us was uh, was, you know, in part because Donovan represents us on that board, so I'd like to thank him as well as the park board and and Mary Jane for working on trying to give it, the mural, everybody is aware, is the um, over there across Walgreens to the south, there's a kind of concrete curb area that's kind of a retention wall, essentially is what it is, and um, that's what they're looking to build. Anything, Willie?
Uh, no, I'm reporting.
Randy, anything for redevelopment?
I think you guys already touched on it a bit. Um, just the amendment for the development agreement.
Right.
Just you. Everything.
Alright. Any, did I miss anybody? Help yourself. Anybody with any announcements? Anybody with any announcements here? I certainly don't try to exclude anybody, but when I am aware of things, I would like to congratulate our kids on the uh, from the dance teams and from the cheerleading, they, uh, my understanding is that they did a terrific job. Uh, are participating in their PCC, I think they really threw on the fire truck, so thank you to the fire department for always uh, making sure that our kids are are represented through the streets, it's always fun, as a kid who rode the autos, we were, it was really kind of a cool time, so I hope it's good. Any other announcements?
Thanks for the clutter treasure, uh, everything was organized this time for us.
Absolutely.
It was really easy to go through all of the packets today, so thank you for being there.
Maybe you could have come some.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and that then we will go to the uh, go to the document, we have three columns, the totals the total being three hundred ninety three thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and five cents. Transfers on a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and nine cents for a net of two hundred and eighty three thousand, one hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety six cents. Is there a motion? I mean, I'm looking for the group to die, I didn't have a voice. There being a motion, is there a second? Mike made a motion, Sandra, seconded that motion, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, file. Uh, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Justin. There being a motion by Cam, seconded by Justin, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes. All those opposed, motion passes, file, and our getting some adjournments.
Seven fifty two.
All, they'll turn heads, not a major.